Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, October 27th, 2021. To order, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance and the moment of silence. Flags are behind me.
I pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, you may notice that the Board of Supervisors and our township staff are wearing pink. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, that raises awareness about breast cancer and the impact it has on our society. And the Board of Supervisors and staff picked tonight to wear pink to show our support. So you can see that around the room. We have it on our masks, and we actually have a very nice pen that also shows support. Thank you to Lisa for helping arrange all this stuff. It's not easy. Before we get to a special presentation, I'd just like to remind everybody that because we are at a limited space in the room, we do have a room open down the hall. And we will allow public comment to come in through the email server. It's publiccomment@nhtwp.org. If you have a comment, if you want to comment on the agenda items, please put the agenda item in the subject and your name and address for the record in the body. Please no more than 300 words. If you want to comment at something at the end of the meeting, you can also email that in. Same address, publiccomment@nhtwp.org. You don't have to put the subject name in, but you could just put your name and address for the record in the body. We'll only read comments that have a name and actual street address, including a house number, please. With that, we're going to start out with a special presentation for the Lions Club recognition tonight. And Dr. Rose is going to come down, and I'm going to help.
I am so, I cannot be more proud today to honor, I wanted to honor each and every person individually. I know we have honored you guys as well.
Excuse me, Kenny, your microphone's out.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Can you turn the microphone?
How about that? Okay, good. I am just so grateful to be able to recognize each and every one of you. I just, the Lions Club has been near and dear to my heart, and today is a very special day. They are celebrating 63 years of service to our community. They have helped the visually and hearing impaired. For as many years as I can remember, they have worked and sponsored events in our Parks and Rec, including our Halloween Happening, Sites and Sounds of Summer Concert Series, and even our upcoming Light the Night Holiday House Showcase. At our senior center, they have helped to feed our residents at the Holiday Marketplace and Bags and Bling Bingo, to name a few. And of course, they are a constant presence and contributor to our Northampton Days Festival. Now, I have personally consumed so many pretzels and hot dogs and walking tacos, and all I could say is, it's always delicious. But more importantly, these fine people bring sunshine to every event that I have ever attended with them there. So with that, I'd like to read our proclamation. Whereas since its charter in 1958, members of the Northampton Township Lions Club have contributed greatly to the betterment of life for the physically disabled, the visually impaired, the underprivileged, and the residents in Northampton Township throughout community service. And whereas the Northampton Township Lions Club was founded as a way to create and foster spirit and understanding, to promote the principles of good citizenship, and take an active interest in the civic, cultural, social, and moral welfare of Northampton community. Over the years, the Northampton Township Lions Club has co-sponsored the Northampton Township Sites and Sounds of Summer series, collected used eyeglasses and sunglasses for reuse in other countries, supported the Bucks County Association for the Blind and Diabetes Awareness, and has also provided scholarship for individuals to attend specialized summer camp. Whereas the Northampton Township Lions Club upholds the motto, "We serve," which they do every day with enthusiasm and kindness. So therefore, the Board of Supervisors and the citizens of Northampton Township hereby recognize and honor the tremendous contributions of the Northampton Township Lions Club to our community. So next, what I'd like to do is I'd like to call up each person individually. Come up and accept your award. All right. The first one we have is our president, Rockne Anderson. Thank you. Could we get a picture?
Sure.
Stand between us. There you go. Okay.
I think, how about a quick drop of the mask for a smile?
Okay, quick drop of the mask.
Quick drop of the mask for a smile.
Okay, okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Rockne.
Thank you.
And Rockne is the, Rockne is the president. The next one is Dr. Scott Ziegan, our vice president. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, stand for a picture. Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. The next one is the secretary treasurer, and I think the originator of our walking tacos, Ann Lang.
Is this Barbara? No, I won't do you too.
Stand between us. There we go. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Joe Goodman. Joe Goodman, not here. Okay. Ruth Haller. Not here? Okay. All right. Deborah Kornicki. Yay!
Her newest member.
New member. George Lang. Jay McDonnell. Great, thank you. Justine Mascaro. We've all known Justine for many years. She worked at Shopping Bags for years. We all go way back with her. There you go. Mary Ann McNulty. I love them. I know. Joe McNulty.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Glenn Miller. Glenn Miller? Okay. Barat Maul. And Barat Maul's not here. George Ryan. Oh, okay, all right. Diane Thomas. Okay. June Tittlemeyer.
Hello, honey. How are you? Going, there we go.
Thank you. Bob Watson.
Can I say a couple words?
You sure can.
I always love a mic in my hand here. This whole club, I've been here since, I'm 70, I've been here since I was 49 years old. We owe the club's resiliency and camaraderie and go forward to help the community to George and Ann Lang. If it wasn't for them, I'm not sure where this club would be by now. I want to give them a special thanks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Len Dubus. Len Dubus?
Oh, Len, L-E-N.
Yeah, no.
I think we're short one, I know.
George, George, what's her last name?
Walton.
George Walton.
Make sure you get one.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, George. Thank you so much.
Here, just hold it.
Would anybody like to say a few words? Ann, come on up.
When do I go to a place that I don't have a few words to say? Amen. Okay, I admit it. I don't even have to use this, I guess. But Bob Watson said something very nice, and it got me, anyway. But we also would like to present you people. When we have people come speak at our place, a little token of thank you and a little bit of recognition, we'd like to give you our little banner.
Thank you.
And could I put in a little publicity? We need new young people. You can see, most of us are walking around, you know? You know, you have to revive up every 15 minutes. But no, it's how we all were young when we started this. I did it, I think, I think I was the second woman that joined the Lions Club. It used to be Lioness, and then Lions. Well, we're lions.
We're still fighting.
Yeah, I know. I wouldn't be here if I, if you won. Anyway, so we do need things, we do love to help people in the township. We have, Kimberly did say a few of the things we do, but as far as a nonprofit, did anybody wants to know that the Lions Club is the oldest and largest nonprofit service organization in the world? You all hear about Kiwanis, and you all hear about, what's the other one?
Rotary.
Rotary, yes. And right, my girlfriend surprised. And that's wonderful. They do great things, too. We need them. But at the same time, this was started that, by Helen Keller, if you remember that name. She's a blind person, and, and blind and deaf. And she started the blind, Bucks County, well, for the blind. So I guess that's, I better sit down now. And thank you so much. You're welcome. Your work, oh, thank you.
Just let them, let them clear out for a minute. Do we have any public comment, Lisa, for agenda items? None? Okay, we're going to move on, then, and we'll go to our consent items. Approval of minutes, Frank?
There it goes. If there are no objections, I request that the minutes be approved by anonymous consent.
Any objections? Okay, approved by consent, thank you. Counts payable, Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for October 13th, 2021. Total all funds, $1,201,088.36. And I have the bills list for October 27th, 2021. Total all funds, $1,648,877.72.
Any objections? Okay, approved by consent. So would everybody please leave the chairs on the orange stripes? We've carefully measured out for social distancing. Everybody should be in a chair. And if not, if you want to comment later, we can call you from the room next door. Thanks. And everybody should be in a mask as well. Thank you. Next is new business. Consider preliminary final plan of land development, Railroad Drive for an office warehouse. Barry?
Yes, please. Is the applicant here?
Hello?
Hey, if you could please identify yourself and.
Sure. My name's Kristen Holmes. I'm with Holmes Cunningham Engineering.
I don't think you're on there.
Got it. Are we good?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Perfect. Kristen Holmes with Holmes Cunningham Engineering. I'm the civil engineer for the applicant. He was hoping to be here tonight. He had a family emergency, so I know he was going to try and get here, so I apologize. It's just me tonight. The application before you is for a, an industrial development off of Railroad Drive. It actually was a previously approved land development from years ago that we're essentially amending to bring up to current standards for the new ordinance requirements. So the plan, it consists of 128,657 square feet of industrial building.
If I could pause you for a moment, I'm sorry. Phil, can you please bring up the plan on the, okay. I just want, we have an image of the site.
Yeah, I think if you could bring up the color rendering, that's probably the best.
Sure.
John, sorry.
Sure. Yeah, so just a quick summary, a little over 128,000 square feet overall of building area. It's going to be broken into two phases of development. The first phase will be used for the, for the property owner. The second phase will have additional units to be leased out. It is essentially the same layout, mostly from what was previously approved. We've added some areas just based on current operations for the industrial users to have additional circulation in the rear behind the building. The property does take access through Railroad Drive, and there will be the required stormwater management and so forth. We've received review letters from all of the different consultants. We've gone through those. We've spoken with the consultants. Everything would be, will comply within those letters, with the exception of the waivers that we are requesting. And if you would like, I could go through those, or if you have any questions that I could answer, we could.
Yes, if I could, if I could pause you for a moment, Kim. So I just want to put forward the resident benefit. So this is the property, it's in the, the.
Barry, can you turn your microphone on? Yes.
There you go. Okay, sure, thank you. So this is in the Business and Technology Center Park that we have, and it's a property, it's a large property, it's 19.4 acres of land. And as the applicant has indicated, they're proposing a total structure of 128,657 square feet. I guess it'll be done in two phases. One phase is going to be 62,932 square feet for the contractor's building, and then Phase Two is going to be a building, it's going to be 17,100 square feet. And then I guess there's a, the other part of Phase Two is going to be a 48,625 square foot leasable space that you'll be building at a later date. As the applicant indicated, they've been to numerous, all our committees, and we have review letters from Gilmore Associates, Finoni, McMahon. It's also gone through the Township Planning Commission. One positive thing, too, is that it has not, didn't need any type of zoning variances whatsoever. So the applicant is fulfilling all the requirements of the existing zoning. The existing property is zoned in I-1, Plan Duster Office District, which permits the construction, trade, shops, builders, plumbers, electricians, earth movers, and utility contracts on a minimum of two acres. And once again, this is a site that's 19.4 acres of land. And then maybe what I could do is I could just read the motion, and then, for the board's benefit, Adam?
Please.
And then, you know, if the applicant wants to make any comments on that, we can certainly do that. So, so I move for final approval of the Gitno Lot Number Three Land Development, SLD 21-2, subject to compliance with the Township Engineer's Review Letter dated July 28th, 2021, the Township Planner's Review Letter dated July 20th, 2021, and the Township Traffic Engineer's Review Letter, letter dated July 28th, 2021. It is further moved that the request waivers be granted in addition approval subject to the following conditions. And there'd be four conditions that I'd like to read. The first condition is the applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, an escrow agreement in form acceptable to the Township Solicitor Engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. The second agreement is a fee in lieu of sidewalks in the amount of $22,238.8, so be required. The third condition is a park and recreational impact fee in the amount of $1,706.15 per 1,000 square feet of gross area is required per the terms of land development agreement in phase of this project. And the last requirement, number four, is the applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, included but not limited to the DEP, the Conservation District, PennDOT, and the municipal authority. Is there a second?
Motion.
Is there a second? Here, we have a motion, a second. Thanks. Any further comment, Barry?
No, the only thing I would comment on is, there's a, it's a very extensive process that the various boards went through, and it was very positively received by engineers and also the planning commission. I also, I note that there's no zoning variances needed in this project, so, you know, I would support it. Bob, did you have a comment, or?
I just wanted to let you know that I don't know if the engineer even knows this. I spoke with Mr. Blair yesterday, and he told me that he would be more inclined to build the sidewalk rather than to pay the fee.
Okay.
We, my suggestion is we leave that as an option for him in the, in the motion.
Okay, sure, we can do that. So I would modify a motion, too, is that, you know, fee in lieu of sidewalks in the amount of $22,238.8 will be determined by the applicant and working with the township.
Is that acceptable to you, Frank?
That's acceptable to me.
Okay, thanks. Good. That's all I have, Adam. Frank, any comments? No. Kim?
I just wanted to ask, so you're building more than the company actually needs, and you're building for retail space to come in?
No, there won't be retail. It's all industrial users, so similar to the tenant that's there. The first phase will be all for Blair's operations.
Okay.
For themselves, and then when they're ready, they'll build the second phase, which is the additional square footage, but would all be industrial users similar to what they have, anything that's a permitted use within the district, but no retail.
Well, we are permitted certain things in there.
Okay.
If you look through it.
Yep, so he doesn't have specific tenants in mind yet.
Okay.
That is a ways out because it is Phase Two, but it would be a permitted use in accordance with the ordinance.
Okay, so it's not for his use?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make killer in that.
I have no other comments. With this vote, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Amanda, did you have a comment?
I deny.
Okay. When you looked up, I wasn't sure if I missed something. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We certainly support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It'd be a nice use of that land. Thank you.
Next on our list is to consider a resolution adopting the Bucks County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the township's hazard mitigation plan. Frank?
As a prerequisite to receiving post-disaster hazard mitigation grant program funds, Section 322 of the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires state and local governments to develop and submit for approval a mitigation plan that outlines processes for identifying their respective natural hazards, risks, and vulnerabilities. As a result, the Bucks County 2021 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update has been developed by Bucks County, both the Emergency Management Agency and the Bucks County Planning Commission in cooperation with other county departments, local municipal officials, and residents. Mr. Kim, I'd like to make a motion?
Please.
I move for approval of Resolution, Resolution R 21-22, adopting the Bucks County 2021 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update as the official hazard mitigation plan of Northampton.
You have a motion in a second. Any further comment, Frank?
No further comments.
Eileen?
No.
Kim?
No.
Barry? And none for me. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're going to move to our liaison reports. And just a reminder, if anybody would like to make a public comment at the end, please make sure, if you're here, that you sign up on the sheet. And if you are listening and would like to send in an email public comment, you can do that at publiccomment@nhtwp.org. Please put your name and address, full address, including house number, street, in the body for the record, and please no more than 300 words. We'll start with Kim.
Yes, I'll start first with Parks and Rec. As we all know by now, this Saturday, October 30th, is our 45th Annual Halloween Happening, and it is scheduled to be held at the municipal park. This outdoor event will start at 11:00 a.m. with registration and entertainment, followed by your, by the popular. by your, by the popular costume parade, a walk along decorated chais, and voting for your favorite trunk and scarecrows. We are keeping our fingers crossed the weather doesn't mess things up. In the event, the weather forecasters are correct this time, modifications to the schedule will need to be made, so keep an eye on any changes by visiting the Park and Rec website. If you're already registered, watch for an email. Parks and Rec works with many nonprofit and charities throughout the year, and a few years back in November began highlighting the local Northampton-based charities and nonprofits that help to make our community thrive. These organizations work tirelessly to make Northampton Township a better place for everyone, and their amazing works deserves to be celebrated. Charities and nonprofit organizations are invited to participate in the showcase. If you're involved in a nonprofit or charitable organization, send us a photo and get the word out about the good works you provide. Photo submissions will be accompanied in a one-two sentence overview of the charity along with a website link where residents can find out more info to volunteer or join your cause. Entries should depict how that organization helps to connect people with a cause while providing inspiration to promote awareness. The showcases will highlight the various charities on the Park and Rec website, Facebook page during the month of November, which will give the public an opportunity to see their charity in action and obtain more information on the good works that are offered. I'm pleased to announce our preschool popery is now a state-licensed childcare program. Registration for this program is ongoing as long as there is availability. Currently, we have a few spots open in the four-year-old, three-day, and five-day programs. Children need to be completely potty-trained and at least four years old by October 15th. Our dedicated and loving teachers will immediately make new students feel welcomed and right at home. If you would like to visit and check out the great job the teachers and staff do, please contact Barbara Pimavera, Program Supervisor, at 215-357-5396. Residents have been participating in many recreational programs virtually since the start of the pandemic and clearly appreciated the opportunity. This year alone, over 115 classes have taken place virtually. Because of the response, the Park and Rec Department will continue to offer both in-person and virtual programming as long as there is a demand. The reasons to participate virtually is many. So make sure you check out Parks and Rec on our website for all the different classes. The holiday season is right around the corner, and since there appears to be that that supply chain issues may affect holiday shopping, why not consider giving a Park and Rec program gift certificate? I've already announced the virtual programs and some of the other programs that are offered. Here's a new one that your teens or even your younger, older adults may appreciate. If they're gamers, this, they may love this. Park and Recs have partnered with GG Leagues in, is partnered to the popular world of esports to Northampton. Perfect for a cold of winter, players can compete solo or create teams and show off their gaming skills. Players are guaranteed a safe online experience with a code of conduct, built-in monitored web-based communication, complete, compete in Super Smash Brothers, Rocket League, Fortnite, Madden 21, and new for winter, Mario Kart 8 Deluxe on Nintendo Switch. Whether you join the youth, teen, or adult league, the world of esports is waiting for you. And speaking of holidays, we just received word from the North Pole that Mrs. Claus will be back in Northampton Township to read books to the children for the holiday season. This will be an outdoor event held at the Wetzel Pavilion located at the Northampton Municipal Park. Mark your calendars for Saturday, December 4th, and be sure to register on the Park and Rec website after November 4th, where you can view all the details, times, and information. And for the senior center, the senior center is quickly getting back to normal with many of its members, plus a great deal of new seniors looking to stay active. The atmosphere at the center is upbeat and positive, with more activities and programs than ever before. Everyone is invited to participate in the next two upcoming events that the center has planned. The first event is the Holiday Wreath Fundraiser. You can place your orders now for fresh, beautiful, evergreen wreaths. Orders can be placed by stopping by the center or calling and having a form sent to you. The wreaths are $14 each and include a bow. Orders will be accepted until Monday, November 29th. At that time, when an order is placed, arrangements will be made for a convenient curbside pickup of the wreaths right at the center. On Friday night, December 3rd, from 5:00 to 9:00, the center will be holding a holiday marketplace. It's a wonderful opportunity to shop in a festive, stress-free, fun and safe environment. You can find a wide selection of unique holiday gifts while helping to support local artists and vendors. And there are still spaces available for vendors. Admission is free and always promises to be a great evening out. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kim. Frank?
The Municipal Authority has completed preliminary work on their budget for this coming year. It will be reviewed by the Authority Board at the November 3rd Board Meeting. The budget to be presented does not include a water or sewer rate increase for the coming year. The new budget year will be the fifth year with no rate increase in water and sewer bills. The Veterans Commission is working to identify former residents of Northampton who died as a result of being killed in action or died of wounds suffered in any of the military actions since World War I. As part of the 300th anniversary, the Township's 300th Anniversary Celebration, the Veterans Advisory Commission wants to place commemorative bricks at Dombowski Park for each individual identified. If anyone has any information that could help the, the commission in identifying those people, please send it into the township. It really would help. It's, uh, we've been trying better than a year now to try and pull that together. It's really difficult. Last, students in Council Rock's Achieve Program recently did a cleanup in Dombowski Park. I understand they plan to adopt the park and make that a regular event for those students. We certainly thank them for their service. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Barry?
Sure. Thanks, Adam. So on October 11th, the zoning hearing board met to consider an application for the Richborough Swim Club in town. And the Richborough Swim Club is putting a, a structure on top of their larger pool, on top of that. That way allow for year-round swimming for the younger adults in our community. So that was approved by the zoning hearing board on October 11th. They're scheduled again to meet on November 8th at 6 o'clock to consider redevelopment of 960, 966, and 970 Second Street Pike. This is right, the property between the McDonald's and TruMark, and there's a proposal to put a new type of Dunkin' Donuts and then maybe another type of fruits restaurant or something else in that property. So there's three sites. There's three houses there today, and they're proposing to tear those down, actually put a new Dunkin' Donuts or drive-in, and maybe some other type of, you know, commercial restaurant, something like that. So that's being proposed at the meeting November 8th. And then the other residential development in town, the Spring Mill Country Club is continuing to have constructions. A lot of new townhouses being built there. And then the Waverly subdivision, a lot of people know several houses are under construction now, so that's being actively developed. The giant in Richborough at the former Murray site, that's been knocked down. That's under construction, too, so that's anticipated to open first quarter 2022. And then there's another development, four houses on East Holland Road at that, that tight turn there, and that's going to be developed shortly, and more and more properties is the one that's developing that. That's the same developer is building the properties on East Holland, a little further up the street. The meeting pertaining to Wawa is going to be November 10th at 7:00 p.m. So November 10th, 7:00 p.m. I know a lot of people here tonight to, to, you know, on that issue. My only recommendations, I'll say it again, it's the best to share your thoughts at that meeting on November 10th at 7:00 o'clock. The applicant will be present at that meeting, so have the chances, you know, hear the applicant, understand it, and we'll have further discussion on it. And the applicant will be there, in addition to this board, to be able to respond to any questions, concerns that you have, and also the applicant can respond to it, and so can this board. We would not be able to respond to anything tonight on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Barry. Eileen? You're in.
Okay, I'm on. The library, I hope that you all know, is, has new hours because of a shortage of staff. Our hours are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 to 8:30, closed on Friday, Saturday is 10:00 to 4:00, and closed on Sunday. Please check out the library website for positions that are being advertised. Also, we are having new director interviews. They're taking place, and hopefully that will be decided and announced shortly. Please remember that face masks are required at all times in township buildings, and the library is one of them. We have a voting Dropbox location in our library, and it is open during regular library hours. That's all I have, sir.
Thanks, Eileen. I just have a few things to review. First, the fire, the fire department did their first-ever fire prevention open house outdoors. We did it in the municipal park during Fire Prevention Week. If you recall, we typically have done those inside the firehouses, all three stations, but with the COVID safety, we thought an outdoor event would be better, and it went over quite well. And we got a lot of positive feedback, and folks want us to do it again outside next year. So that will probably happen. The only difficult part is it's a little weather-dependent, so hopefully we'll be able to, to accommodate that. The police department did a drug take-back in the last couple of weeks down at the police station, a very successful event, and look for more of those in the future. It's really a great way to get rid of old medicine, anything you have in your house that doesn't need to be there anymore. It's a much, much safer and better way than throwing it away where somebody could get to it or flushing it down the waste system where it could accumulate in, in the waterways. Reminder, Halloween is coming. I think everybody probably knows that, but let's keep a sharp watch for our kids in the streets. I think we're going to have more folks out this year than we did last year, enjoying it. I'm not sure what the weather looks like, but keep an eye out and make sure everybody is, is safe around our children. And then finally, the weekend after Halloween, daylight savings ends, back to Eastern Standard Time. And if you recall, you change your clocks, you change your batteries in your smoke detectors, so please make sure you do that, and also check your carbon monoxide detector as well. You should have a smoke detector on every level of your house and one in every bedroom, and a smoke, a carbon monoxide detector, at least one in your house, but two is preferable in the living areas of your home. I have one last thing. It's always nice to embarrass somebody, well, not really embarrass somebody, but today is Eileen Silver's birthday. And so we do want to recognize Eileen with a little gift from the staff and supervisors. Happy birthday. I think Eileen has spent a lot of birthdays here, you know, at these meetings, so enjoy. Many more to come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, that's all, all I have. We'll go over to the manager's report. I have nothing to report tonight, sir. Go on. Thank you.
Excuse me, Adam. This is beautiful. Thank you. Do you know anything when Don dropped off our things to the police for the drug, the officer said something about a Thanksgiving food drive that was going to happen on November the 13th? Does any of our staff know about that? No?
I'm not sure I know about it, but if, if, if we get information on it, we can certainly get it up on the website.
Please look on the website, because it's about Thanksgiving and doing full Thanksgiving dinners, so the police can give it out. He got a flyer. That's the only thing I know.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see it yet.
Yeah.
Thanks. Mr. Paizo?
I should report that immediately prior to this evening's meeting, the board met in executive session for approximately 30 minutes. Present for the executive session were the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the Township Manager, the Assistant Township Manager, the Township Engineer, and me. The matter discussed was a matter of pending litigation. No official action was taken during the executive session regarding that matter, and no official action is required at this evening's meeting as a result of that executive session.
Thank you, Joe. Engineers report, Amanda? No report tonight? Okay, thank you. We're going to move to public comment, and it looks like we have a fairly long list, so I'll try to do this like we do it each, each meeting. I'll try to, and I'll announce the first person and then the person on deck. If the person on deck is in the room, feel free to just stay in your seat. If they are in the other room, I don't know if there are folks down the hall or not. I can't tell. So if I call your name and you're listening down the hall on deck, please just come and stand at the back of the room here, and then I'll have you come up. We do have a long list, so I'm going to hold everybody to three minutes tonight. Please, when I kind of give you the high sign, finish up your thought. This is, don't forget, this is normally for residents only. I think there may be some non-residents. We will let people speak tonight, but please hold to the three minutes so that everybody gets a chance to speak and everybody can get their opportunity. I say this every meeting, on all, on all issues, I would suggest, you're welcome to have your three minutes to say what you like. Have something different and new. If you want to just say that someone else has, has shared your thoughts, that's okay, too. You're welcome to say you just agreed with whoever. I will ask each person to say their name and address, including house number, for the record each, each time. So first up is Carol Ri...
Reifstek.
I'm sorry?
Reifstek.
Thank you. Sorry. And on, on deck will be Sharon Furlong.
Okay. My name is Carol Reifstek. I live at 54 Twist Drive with my husband, son, and mother.
Sure.
Okay. My name is Carol Reifstek. I live at 54 Twist Drive with my husband, son, and my mother. I've been a resident here for 28 years, and I'd like this opportunity to come here not only as a resident or a neighbor, but also as a medical professional who has spent more than 30 years in the oncology field. I come here to advocate for my neighbors and to educate people to speak of the cancer risk of benzene exposure. Let me start with what benzene is. Benzene is a chemical that is found in gasoline, and there are also many other chemicals, but benzene is the one that is most, most dangerous to the environment. According to the American Cancer Society and the CDC, there are, there is lots of proof that shows that this is linked to cancers. Benzene works by causing cancers, causing cells not to work properly, and it can cause the bone marrow, where your cells are produced, not to make enough red cells, which can lead to anemia. It can also affect the white blood cells of your body, which damage your immune system, thus inhibiting the body's ability to fight off infection, viruses, and cancers. The poisoning caused by benzene depends on the amount of benzene, the root, the length of time of exposure, as well as the age and the pre-existing medical conditions of a person being exposed. Immediate exposure, which is defined as within minutes to hours, can produce drowsiness, nose and throat irritation, dizziness, headaches, nausea, vomiting, confusion, breathing difficulties, and death. Long-term exposure, which is defined as a year or longer, can cause periods to become irregular in women, resulting in decreased ovarian size, unknown effects to fetuses, although they do know that they can have low birth weights, unknown effects on male fertility, but harmful effects, as I mentioned already, to the bone marrow, which can cause anemia, but more scary can cause leukemias, multiple myeloma. There's links to kidney, stomach, brain, pancreas, prostate, lung, and skin cancers. I see that all of you tonight have your pink on to support our society for breast cancer, and I hope that you really think about supporting us and our community to reduce any kind of risk that we could become exposed to. I don't know about you, but I think 70 feet within a home is a little close, and I don't care if it's one of my neighbor's homes. That's too close to be exposed to this gas. I've seen cancer ravage, ravage. I'm getting emotional because I've, I've worked in oncology, and I've seen it ravage families and crush families' hearts, and we can prevent this. And we can prevent this by not approving this Wawa with all this pump, with all this gas. I know many people think about the conveniences they want. I've lived here for 28 years. I drive to a gas station. I drive to my supermarket. It's really not been that much. So I just ask you to really consider to stop any kind of future cancer cluster. It's not going to be in a year that this happens, but it's going to be five years, 10 years, 15 or 20 years down the road. And I don't really want to have to be taking dinners to my neighbors because their husband, their wife, their grandchildren, the kids at a Holland Elementary have this exposure over years and wind up with brain cancer or leukemias.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Furlong, and then Pam Duffy, you're on deck. Sharon, I'm going to hold you to three minutes this time, okay? Please. Thank you.
Sharon Furlong, 133 Bristol Road, Feasterville, Lower Southampton, Bucks Environmental Action spokesperson. I'm going to speak to one of the requested waivers that was submitted by Profco and Wawa. The waiver I'm talking about was the partial waiver from Saldos Section 22-403.8b (c) (7) to permit less than the required amount of parking lot landscape area. I've talked about this before, and this is a piece of what I have already spoken. The clause that they want a waiver from is very clear. It says, "A minimum of 10% of any parking lot facility shall be devoted to landscaping, inclusive of required trees." And 10% is not a lot, but this group is asking for 5.9%, which is close to a 50% reduction on ground that is over five acres, that is now totally pervious land that is designed by nature to take care of stormwater mitigation, pollution, and cleansing of the underground, underwater hydrological system that Bucks County has been blessed with, to request an almost 50% reduction in a site that is already reducing by 90%. That natural buffer zone is, to me, unconscionable, but the law is also very clear. To ask for a waiver is indication of a sense of people and nature and the planet as being just commodities for two groups, Profco and Wawa, to just enhance their bottom line. It's very difficult for all of us to consider ourselves to be just commodities, to be traded, and the planet doesn't have a voice, so people like me come up and try to talk about this. It should not be considered a commodity either for somebody's bottom line. I don't care how anybody wishes to support this business. I myself like Wawa as a business, but that has nothing to do with what the pollution that could occur from something like this in an ill-sighted place. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Duffy? Pam Duffy is up, and Joan Chack, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Pam Duffy, 125 Hope Road, Holland, PA. I have a few points to make tonight about the proposed Holland Super Wawa. My first point, our zoning officer has used the Richborough Wawa as precedent for the proposed Holland Wawa, says we're just like Richborough. Well, if we're just like Richborough, there's a big thing going on there that I understand. Parents are dropping off their teenage children, ages 14, 15, and 16, to hang out there, to just hang around, you know, whatever, party in the parking lot. And I was told that sometime after school started, probably in September, there was a huge incident of teenagers, started out as a girl fight in high school, moved on to the Wawa, parents dropped the kids off, they had their boyfriends, there were knives. It's a huge to-do, it's in juvenile court, there is a police report on the incident. Mind you, that Richborough Wawa is in a commercial area. The Holland Super Wawa will not be in a commercial area. Also, I was told by a former school board member that in terms of like the 911, you call 911, the dispatch, you're in some kind of, and Adam, you probably know about this, some kind of areas or whatever, but Holland Village is the absolute worst in Northampton Township to get in and out of because of the traffic issues. What do you think a Super Wawa in the middle of all this will do to that? My third point, you have scheduled three meetings around holidays. Three. The three, the last meetings. July 7th is the biggest vacation week in the summer. It was exactly two days after the people who work were given the holiday on the Monday. It was to be held on Wednesday. That meeting was canceled. September 8th, during the Rosh Hashanah, disrespecting our Jewish neighbors who wanted to spend time with family and friends, that was canceled. We appreciate you doing that. October 6th, canceled two hours, two hours. People were on their way, people were trapped, they changed their travel plans to be there, and people like me took the day off from work because I wanted to be ready for the meeting with Wawa two hours before at 5:00 p.m. People were eating dinner. We tried to call everybody, we couldn't get, we couldn't get ahold of everybody, and people showed up. Now, November 10th, Veterans Day, the eve of Veterans Day, you have planned another meeting despite, I personally wrote a letter to Mr. Pellegrino. He said, "We're not changing the meeting." That's it. The hell with you, veterans. We are your friends, neighbors, and constituents, and all you do is continue to disrespect us. Northampton Township failed us by allowing outdated ordinances and a 67-year-old zoning to prevail. You're not supporting us to fight. It's your failure, and you're letting us take the hit for it. We are your sacrificial lambs. The Board of Supervisors could have challenged the zoning hearing sham, but they did not. Neighbor's lawsuit did not claim party status when you had the opportunity to, and since you did not support us, it appears you were supporting Profco Wawa. And Monday, as October 25th, two days ago, the attorneys met with the judge of the Court of Common Pleas, where the lawsuit is happening. Again, no support from Northampton Township. It's us against the giant, corporate giant of Wawa, who was so lawyered up.
Can you finish up?
Sure. Your actions will never be forgotten if you allow the super gas station Wawa to be built 70 feet from homes. Don't kid yourself, Northampton Township residents, Northampton Township residents in general, Wawa will not stop at Buck and Roxville Road. They have Wawas every mile, and they're going to continue to go. And supervisors, you will be held accountable forever, forever. That will be your Wawa. I will make sure your names are synonymous with it if you don't vote now. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Chack? Joan Chack, and then on deck will be Tom Bueker.
Hello, name and address, please. Hi, I'm Joan Chack. I live at 74 Lakeview Drive, Holland, PA, 18966.
Thank you.
I got out of my class a little early to run over here. With me, I'm holding the Holland Village Master Plan, which you could see is a little dog-eared, and I have little markings on this, and I hate to admit, I think I read this more than the Bible. I think I'm kind of an expert on it at this point. I've talked to you before, I know this is, I'm probably sounding like a broken record, but I went to the town hall meeting in December 4th of 2012. Believe it was up here. I was a little younger than I am now, and all of the neighbors in my neighborhood went to this meeting. And I know a number of you were at this meeting. And actually, on this document, which finally, I guess it took a year and a half to get out, it was published in May 2014, and on this document are the names of, Eileen Silver was the chairperson at the time, Barry Moore, Dr. Rose, Robert Pellegrino, and Michael Solomon. And I remember at that meeting, a lot of my neighbors went, and some of them were elderly. One actually wanted a ride at the time. And they were, some of the, you know, because we're in the older part of Holland, Holland, our neighborhood was built in the 50s, and the people that were living there were very professional. We're now kind of the blue-collar neighborhood, but they were the professionals at the time and the business owners. You may know their names, Canerkos, Smoyers, and also at the time, George Kamalaski was on the Board of Supervisors. And we always felt, even though, you know, he and I were not in the same political party, I always felt that he represented us and us in Holland. Those people aren't here anymore, but I kind of wish that we were honoring what was in this plan, because those people were there and those people gave their input. This document's still on our website. After what I've been seeing going on here, I kind of wish it would get pulled down, because I don't feel like we're following this plan, which is still noted as our official plan. We were told to have a survey that night. We did this survey, and then it came out here in the publication, and we were supposed to rank what was most needed businesses. And the number-one ranking is the people that were present, so they wanted to keep small-town character. They want a neighborhood retail and restaurants and boutique shopping. Not one vote, there was no vote for a 24/7 convenience store with gas stations. Not one vote. Also, in this document, we talk about the Wright property and the zoning.
Finish up, please.
Finish up, please?
Yep.
You can give me a few more seconds if you want.
I'm asking you to finish your thought, thanks.
Okay. C2, general, commercial, and office. R3 residential, retail stores, businesses, and professional offices and restaurants. There is a little asterisk, "with conditional," and gas station is considered conditional. I don't know how it happened, I don't know why this board gave up that right to keep gas stations considered as conditional. I know it was called by right when you put it into Richborough, and now we're saying, everybody here is saying we can't do anything, because now it's by right. I know, but nobody's going to answer me. I'm just, I feel helpless in this. I feel we had this meeting, we have this document, your names are on it, you were the chairperson at the time. This is all I have to say.
Thank you. Tom Bueker, and your name and address for the record, and on deck is Brett Duffy.
Hi. My name is Tom Bueker. I'm at 669 Holland Road, Holland, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
And, let's see. So you may remember me from the August meeting, where I used pictures to present the main arguments of those opposed to this Super Wawa. That is what it does to the area in terms of quality of life, traffic, and the environment. I spoke of an alternative site, that of the closed Shell Station, 900 feet south of the Wright property inside the business district. I have two pictures tonight. The first shows the view looking out from the proposed site. The second highlights what is really going on with Holland Road. Now, here is the picture of the, this is Roxville Road here. This is the proposed Wawa site. I want to say, too, to your credit, the day before the proposed vote meeting, you guys were seen on the site, looking out at this view, and it gives me hope that this isn't some preordained idea that this is going to happen. This was a gloomy day, and it was overcast and raining, and someone saw you out there. So God bless you all. It's great that you were there. So here it is. This is Roxville Road. This is the proposed view. This is actually a picture of Richborough Wawa. Notice the police here during the midday, and they weren't getting coffee. Here's the view. If you have it as a clock, and 12 o'clock is Hope Road, from 3:00 around to 8:00 here are homes. The view from this Wawa is homes, more than half of the space there, okay? So now, the next one, then. This is the picture of the proposed Wawa. The green arrows are Holland Road today. It's very simple, you go south or you go north. This is what they intend to do with Holland Road. They want to wrap it around their Wawa, so that everybody has to pass the Wawa. Over here on Buck Road, now they're going to make all the Holland Road traffic go up Holland, make a severe left turn at a left-turn arrow, and then continue to make another severe turn, a right turn, to go north on Holland Road. As I mentioned, people are going to bypass this. Now, here, I don't know where the traffic studies are, but the 2012 Master Plan showed 20,000 vehicles at that time coming up here every day. If you figure half of them are northbound, you're taking 10,000 cars up here. Here's the point I want to make. Buck Road north traffic has never stopped. From the light, it never stops at the light down there. It continues all the way through. Holland Road stops northbound, Buck does not. We're going to stop it there, and we're going to stop all of the Holland Road traffic in a left-turn lane. This is, this is going to back up, all the way back to probably to the tunnel. Anyway, that's the picture there, and let me continue. So my hats off to the Wawa and Profco planners and lawyers. I can't believe they got such a disastrous plan this far. It should have stopped at zoning. Maybe it was the COVID Zoom zoning meeting, or it was a foregone conclusion that this mega station would be allowed on the site, a site zone, general, commercial, where the sale of motor vehicle fuel should have required a conditional use hearing. The township zoning folks should have said, in regard to the gas, if you've got to have a Wawa, have it across from the current Wawa on the site of the former Shell Station, where there are already three underground storage tanks. Our planners, to their credit, voted unanimously to recommend against this project. Not only did Wawa-Provcop get it past our zoning people, but they have PennDOT's buy-in as well. What they've done with the roads is to wrap Holland Road around the Wawa, making sure drivers have the easiest access possible.
Can you finish up?
It does not improve traffic, it makes it worse, as I've demonstrated in others' will. The conclusion I've reached is this. It's not the responsibility of a business such as Wawa-Provcop to design or pay for roadwork associated with a planned site. To the extent they've developed a plan for rerouting state roads and intend to pay for it, they've offered PennDOT a huge incentive to buy into their plan. They hope to do the same to our township supervisors. I hope the supervisors see it for what it is, a self-serving quid pro quo. Thank you.
Brett Duffy, you're up, and Mark, sorry, you're up next, thank you. Please hold to the three minutes. I'm trying to give everybody a little latitude to finish their thoughts. If I ask you to finish your thoughts, please do that. Be respectful to the next group of people that would like to speak.
Trying my best, thank you. My name is Brett Duffy, 125 Hope Road. Northampton Township, in every sense of the word, has failed us. They've failed on the Holland Super Wawa debacle, a project that will destroy life as we know it in Holland forever. They failed on the October 6th Board of Supervisors meeting to vote on the Wawa, completely disrespecting their residents who rearranged their lives and took off from work to be there by canceling the meeting just two hours before it was set to begin. They failed on the Northampton Country Club, buying what can only be described as a resort-type business with our tax dollars, putting the township in millions of dollars of debt until 2043. They failed on the Millray Center, letting a derelict and frankly dangerous building stand abandoned for over two decades while they focused their energy on buying country clubs. And perhaps worst of all, they have failed us by raising taxes while pretending to be physically responsible. It's truly disheartening for a young resident of this township to see just how much my local government has failed me. Remember, folks, this is a board of supervisors where some of its members have rolled their eyes at our concerns, looked at their phones as if we were reading from the dictionary, and winked at their colleagues as if our legitimate concerns over a deadly development were some kind of joke. It's truly sickening. This is a board that allowed a colleague of yours to interrupt a resident's public comment regarding the Wawa, proving the township is seemingly indifferent to our concerns, but is readily willing to interrupt its constituents. The township has also engaged in what can only be described as muzzling dissent on the Wawa issue, with a supervisor expressly saying not to comment on the project until the official meeting to vote on it occurs. And might I just add that this exact supervisor said the same thing tonight. For Northampton Township, it appears there are several individuals who have conflicts of interest with Wawa, and for someone who believes in our democratic process and representative government, this flagrant display of individuals with split loyalties is deeply disturbing. Additionally, this township has scheduled meeting after meeting around holidays, including unbelievably planning to have a meeting on Rosh Hashanah, one of the most important Jewish holidays of the year. To date, Northampton Township has not assisted its residents in fighting the Holland Super Wawa in any way whatsoever. They did not declare party status to support their residence lawsuit against archaic zoning laws. They did not challenge the zoning hearing board's erroneous decision to classify a 16-pump gas station as accessory use to the Wawa market. market. And perhaps most shockingly, township officials told residents living in close proximity to the site that they bore responsibility for buying homes near commercially zoned property, completely ignoring the fact that the zone, that the land is zoned for light commercial and not a mega gas station. Tonight, a supervisor who campaigned on making Holland walkable sits before us. It seems hard for me to believe that a gas station that people will exclusively drive to will make Holland walkable. The same supervisor said, "If something's just not right, you vote against it." I ask in this moment that you keep your word, but from my perspective, this township has shown very little willingness to follow through with that. In fact, they have done just the opposite by ignoring or even ridiculing residents who speak out against it on social media. The truth is that if you vote to approve this monstrosity, your undying legacy will be the destruction of the once beautiful Holland. Despite all this, I still believe this township and its board of supervisors has the honesty, integrity, and accountability to do, to do the right thing and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.[658.23][658.23](APPLAUSE). Mark, you're up. And then Georgia Weiss, you're on deck.
Thank you so much. My name is Mark Gribman. I live on 121 Hope Road. I moved to the neighborhood about 20 years ago, started a family just before my children were born. So they moved out now. I have, live with my wife and two dogs. And still a little bit upset that, or a bit upset that I came to the last meeting, it was canceled two hours before. I'm in technology business, so I think it's just unheard of that you cancel the meeting without notifying. I mean, there are so many technology ways to do it. We talk about your website not being up to date, but I'm here to talk about the reshaping of the community that I've seen over the years. I think it's a radical reshaping. I personally avoid Richborough corridor because of all the new businesses that came up, including Wawa. Because I'm in technology business, there are trends that are happening right now. Most of my, the folks that I talk to, and maybe, you know, call them Eflin, but they're looking at the new technology, electric cars and so on and so forth, are either considering buying electrical car, or in the market, or going to do that. So for me, it's just unbelievable that, you know, we're going to consider another, another gas station entering this neighborhood at this inflection point where, you know, all the car manufacturers are moving out. So I know Wawa is trying to, to model all the businesses the same, but you know, you as the leaders of this community, you know, you have certain responsibility and a vision. And you know, my question to you, you know, think through, as you approach this meeting, what are your aspirations, right? Do you, do you foresee gas being at $10 a buck a gallon, and people buying gas or switching to electric cars? And if, you know, you have a large gas station, what are Wawa is going to do if they can't derive profit from the gas that they continue to sell? They'll have to switch to another model. It's a corporation, right? They need to drive the business somewhere, so they have to change. Just like you have hard time controlling the Mascaro, and, and you know, the truck drivers and their ability to deliver on their promise, you may have difficulty controlling Wawa or any other corporation. Building Wawa, you know, you can invite other businesses across the street. So just calling on you, I know a lot of people have experiences with, you know, medical professionals, traffic support. I'm calling on your leadership and, and you know, vision to decide how do you see this community, and how you're going to leave this community, what do you leave this community for? I can move out, right? Nothing really holds me. My children are out of school. I don't really care so much about the school district anymore as I used to. But I like the neighborhood, the small feel. I like the fact that there are natural boundaries for large trucks to come in. Reshaping this community, reshaping traffic, and allowing another gas station to show up here will invite a lot more changes. So I want you to consider the implications of, you know, what's going to happen in the next meeting. Thank you so much.[855.13][855.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Georgia Weiss, and then Jerry Duffy's on deck. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is, my name is Georgia Trana Weiss. I live at 102 Hope Road, on a beautiful tree-lined street where children walk to school and they ride their bikes. Neighbors jog and they walk their dogs. My family moved here almost 20 years ago, from just 1.2 miles away. Why? Being an educator, schools were the main reason for our move. We were looking for the serenity of a quiet, calm, and peaceful neighborhood. The amenities in Northampton were many, and we were willing to work hard to stay here and to pay the heavy expenses. We have loved living in Northampton Preserve. Never in our wildest dreams did we ever expect a toxic, traffic-competing, dangerous commercial property to be at our corner. We were never told this could even be possible. It's astonishing to even think that the health and welfare of our children and our neighbors are at risk. We are certain none of you would want this at your corner. For the people who sacrifice to be in this township, say no to the Wawa.
Thank you.[938.82][938.82](APPLAUSE). Jerry Duffy is up. And then Ilia Bremen?
Hi. Good evening. Jerry Duffy, 125 Hope Road, Holland. I want to start out by saying I'm angry. I'm angry that we're here groveling to our supervisors to do the right thing. It shouldn't have come to this. And in fairness to you, you shouldn't have been put in this position. But our zoning officer and our zoning hearing board failed all of us. This land could have and should have been rezoned to not allow a behemoth commercial business in a residential neighborhood. But when there was an opportunity to hear our concerns, the very concerns that you're hearing tonight, Provco muzzled us, wouldn't allow us to speak, told us we weren't experts on zoning. But we are experts on our Holland community, our roads, our community, our traffic flow, our environment. That's when our opinion should have been welcomed and invited. That's when it mattered, when your zoning board could have heard us and considered some meaningful zoning changes. Not now in the 11th hour. All we can do is continue to voice our very serious, very legitimate, heartfelt concerns because we have no other choice. So in the zoning hearing board meeting back in April, the approval of the Richborough- Addisville Super Wawa was used as a precedent for building the proposed Holland Super Wawa. Tonight, I want to very clearly explain to you why the Richborough Super Wawa should not be used as a precedent for the proposed Holland Super Wawa. It's like comparing apples and oranges. The Richborough Super Wawa, only four miles away from Holland and which opened just four years ago, occupies a rectangular footprint, bordering a large parking lot of other commercial businesses. And there are four entrances and four exits out of the Wawa lot, as well as a dedicated access road bordering it. It is surrounded by commercial businesses, and the closest homes are beyond the access road, beyond trees, with no direct access to the homes. A driver would need, and I did this, a driver would need to make a left onto the access road, a right onto Second Street Pike, a right onto Tannard Road, a right onto Deborah, and a right onto East Elizabeth Lane to get to the closest homes. Mr. Moore, I think it was you that mentioned there were three homes, or Dr. Rose, three homes that are being replaced by some other commercial development? Well, the only remaining homes that might be there in the area, it's becoming even more commercial. But I would just wanted to say how circuitous it is for any cars to get to a neighborhood from that Super Wawa. By contrast, the Holland site has no connected commercial businesses. There is a small shopping center across very busy Buck Road. It's not connected to the Holland footprint, it's across Buck Road. It has no access road. The access road effectively, Roxville Road becomes the access road, tiny Roxville Road. There's only three entrances and only two exits, and it's surrounded on two sides of the triangle by existing residential homes and by two very busy, high-traffic roads. The closest homes are immediately accessible by drivers coming out of the Super Wawa, unlike Richborough, where they have to make all these lefts and rights, and it takes forever to get to the neighborhood. The best way to describe this Holland site, especially during rush hours, is it's a mousetrap. It will be difficult for cars to get into the Wawa, and even more difficult for them to get out. I'm finished. Just because it works in Richborough doesn't mean it will work in Holland. Just because the zoning permits it doesn't mean it is logical or right for the residents of Holland. Please vote against this Super Wawa proposal.[1156.42][1156.42](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Ilia, and then on deck is Christine Richardson. Your name and address. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Ilia Bremen. I live at 290 Holland Road. It's the red brick house facing the beautiful trees and grass on the Wright property. My family came to the United States 20 years ago from the former Soviet Union. My parents bought our family home on Roxville Road in 2004, and they still live there. This is why my wife, my two kids, nine and six, and I were really thrilled when we could finally buy our first real house so close to them on Holland Road. We came to this country knowing that this is a nation of laws, not backroom deals and bureaucrats. It's a place where money cannot buy justice, and where big corporations cannot write, rewrite, and bend laws to serve their goals at the expense of common people. Unfortunately, as Martin Luther King put it, "Sometimes a law is just on its face, but unjust in its application." I'm not here to talk about the land development application, not just because I don't want you to prejudge it, but because the fate of this project won't be decided on November the 10th. It's in the hands of the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas, and we have faith in the judicial independence of this country. It is very unsettling that we are being forced to fend for ourselves. When you refuse to comment on the land development application, I understand that. But when you refuse to acknowledge that the zoning determination was incorrect, or that this board failed to clarify use, to clarify use definitions after the Wright aid fiasco, or even after Provco reached out about this project before anything was submitted before this board, your silence is deafening. Instead of siding with your neighbors, taxpayers, small businesses, you silently took the side of a land speculator and a multi-billion dollar corporation. We heard from our, from some of our supervisors that they can't do anything because this is private property and private property rights are sanctimonious. We all know that no rights are absolute. Everyone has their own favorite amendment, but in the end, it's all about finding balance between legitimate, public, and private interests. For example, this board decided that it's in the public interest to limit our First Amendment rights to three minutes per resident, and that's okay. Property rights aren't absolute either. Our right to quiet enjoyment, to ensure our kids' safety when walking to school or getting off the bus, to breathe fresh air free of toxic benzene fumes must be taken into consideration. And that's exactly what the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan drafters intended. In fact, our municipal ordinance clearly states that the commercial district regulation intent is to protect nearby residents, residential areas from noise, glare, odor, and any other obnoxious condition which might result from commercially-oriented uses. Moreover, the specific intent of the C2 district is to provide convenient, pedestrian-oriented facilities for local residents, which no reasonable person thinks a gas station is. It's okay to make mistakes when one learns from them. You made one when you decided to hold yourselves and us hostage to the erroneous determination with regards to the Richborough Wawa gas station, which should have also been conditional use. One doesn't need to be a lawyer to know that that administrative decision could not set a precedent, no matter how Wawa, Provco, and your own solicitor tried to scare you into thinking that.
Can you finish up, please?
Unfortunately, your last opportunity to correct that mistake and intervene on the side of the residents was this summer, when you could have claimed party status in our appeal. And I hope that if there's another chance for you to do the right thing, you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.[1400.47][1400.47](APPLAUSE). Christine Richardson, and then next up is John Bishop.
Good eve, oh, sorry. Good evening. I'm Christine Richardson. I live at 64 West Rambler Drive in Holland, PA. As a resident who lives just over a half mile from the proposed site for the Super Wawa, I have serious concerns with this project moving forward. I drive through this area minimally twice every day as I go to and from work. The traffic in that area is truly horrendous, and that's without a Super Wawa. It's difficult to navigate on an average day because of the rides, the rise in the roads on Buck and Holland. It's extremely challenging, and it at times has compromised the safety of myself as well as other motorists. Added any number of variables that could arise, such as inclement weather, a down tree, the difficulty in navigating these roads increases exponentially. Now, I live on a road that doesn't have any sidewalks, and my road will likely increase with cut-through traffic. I truly worry about the children that can often be seen on my road, riding their bikes and on their skateboards, families that are walking with their dogs and with their baby strollers, worry about their safety. Then, of course, there's also the concerns of light pollution, noise pollution, and the potential for environmental pollution. Businesses coming into our township should be community-friendly and good for all residents of Northampton. Now, unfortunately, many people have the "not in my backyard" attitude, and that's not okay. Outdated zoning ordinances really must be looked at to prevent a situation from, like this, from happening again in the future. In conclusion, and also personally speaking, I wouldn't want a Super Wawa in my backyard. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you.[1532.33][1532.33](APPLAUSE). John Bishop, and then Diane Marazo up next.
Hi, John. Hi. John Bishop, 124 Mary Dell Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I appreciate it. I respect the very difficult deliberations that you all have undertaken, and also the very difficult decisions you must make. I very much appreciate your efforts, actually on behalf of all of us, to mitigate the impact that the Holland Super Wawa project will have on the community. Now, I too have listened with interest to the concerns of our fellow residents, many concerns of which I share, namely the infringement on the well-being of the surrounding homeowners and their families, and the safety of the new traffic patterns this project will create. Though it certainly has the intention to solve, or at least ameliorate, current traffic problems in the area, this project, in my view, may actually exacerbate these traffic issues, and may create new issues that jeopardize public safety by placing our community's motorists and pedestrians at risk. Thus, I cannot support this project as it currently stands. Now, it can be said that an affirming decision coming up next week will provide increased leverage to bring about more positive outcomes, as this project may inevitably be completed. This is a valid argument for consideration, albeit with uncertain consequences. Also valid is an opposing decision, which recognizes the as-yet irreconcilable flaws of the project, and serves to hold the safety and well-being of our fellow residents paramount. This too has uncertain consequences. Though zoning ordinances and usage interpretations may abide, there are times when we should stand up and for safety and well-being. This, in my view, is one of those times. As we move forward, though, it is important that we learn from this experience. As effective use of commercial space is vital for the financial and services health of the township, we must take further steps to review and update our zoning ordinances and inherent usage rights to best match and accommodate the surrounding properties and residences, whether those commercial lands are developed or undeveloped. Doing this, in my view, will help to prevent such a difficult situation as the one that stands before us all, and such a difficult decision as the one that stands before all of you, from happening again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1676.47][1676.47](APPLAUSE). Diane is up, and then Lori Fissinger.
Hi. I'm Diane Marazo. I live at 2423 Second Street Pike in Wrightstown. So Northampton Township is prepared to vote on this Holland Super Wawa proposal, and what has not been discussed here is the potential conflicts of interest of some individuals associated with the township that have an association also with Wawa. It is believed that one of the supervisors who will be voting on this project actually has direct business dealings with Wawa and may stand to benefit financially should it be built. This person should absolutely recuse himself, but count me as skeptical if this will actually happen. But how did this come to where we're at? Why are we sitting here tonight in front of an individual who potentially has a stake in the project and may want it to be approved for his own personal benefit? How has Northampton Township credibility sunk so low? Excuse me. Why is this transparency that is often talked up by you folks lost in Wawa transit? Above all, why do Provco and Wawa have the right to push around Northampton Township as if it were a stepchild? I'll tell you why. Because Northampton Township cares little for their constituents. They care about tax revenue and scoring political points, not normal people like the rest of us. And the only thing that is going to change that is a no vote on this project is your ability and the ability to wash away the negative karma that you have accumulated through the years of what we have perceived as questionable behavior, right? The wrongs of the past by doing the right thing and vote against this disaster. Thank you.[1796.91][1796.91](APPLAUSE).
Lori Fissinger? Lori Fissinger. Somebody coming from down the hall? Is anybody down there?
No.
All right. I'll put a check. Suzanne Claus?
Yeah, yeah.
And then Michael Torante will be next.
My name is Suzanne Claus. My address is 24 Ronald Drive, Holland, PA, 18966. I just agree with every word that came out of every person's mouth right now, and I just, I guess, want to propose to you, like, what do you see as your legacy as our elected officials for the people that put you in this office? That, you know, we have concerns about our health, our well-being, our future for ourselves, our children, and I can't imagine that you could be so cavalier as to put our lives in danger while, because I can't imagine one of you for one second wants an 16-pump gas station 70 feet from your house. So I just think that you should at least consider the lives that you're affecting that have put you in the position of authority to represent us, and it doesn't seem like you are representing us. So on that aspect avenue, I guess you've failed. So I just think that each one of you should give us consideration and not just yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Torante.
Hello, my name's Michael Torante, 502 Buck Road. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. I'm not much of a public speaker, but you won't have to give me the eye to get out, so I'll be quick. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a former Northeast Philadelphia resident. Me and my wife decided we need to move to flee the chaos of Northeast Philadelphia. So Holland was the exact spot we wanted to go. We basically mortgaged our future to get into this area. So, you know, Buck Road's less than ideal where we wanted to go. We lost seven or four houses because last year was kind of chaotic, but it opened up. We took it, and we are less than a half mile away from this. So it is going to be a disaster, and I'm not going to get into Wawa because basically everybody knows here in this room, it's not a good, including you guys, you know, whatever you vote on. But so basically, I wore this sweatshirt for a meeting tonight, too, because what you guys are doing, you are treading on us as taxpayers in this township. So in today's political climate, it seems like every political figure is out for themselves. So tonight, I ask you guys to stand up with the people of this township and fight with us. Fight with us, the people who put you in office. Thank you for your time.
I have two public comments to read. The first one is from Jeffrey Gwynn at 70 West Rambler Drive in Holland. Good evening, Board of Supervisors and neighbors in Holland, PA. When I was a young boy, we often traveled from Philadelphia, PA to my uncle Bill Grady's home in Churchill. I enjoyed seeing the open but growing township of Northampton. My cousins enjoyed serving their neighbors throughout the township with their lawn service and landscaping business, Grady Brothers. They even sold many of the township homeowners Christmas trees in the winter from their location on Second Street Pike, always with a friendly and caring nature. This is what Northampton Township is made of, people that come together to support and help their fellow neighbors. We are asking that you apply the same beliefs that those in this room have expressed. Although Wawa Provco, allowing Wawa Provco to come into Holland, PA and build a gasoline station with 16 pumps and a convenience store is against these beliefs, this will destroy the community and add additional properties to be blighted. We all know that Wawa brings big money, but they also bring crime and destruction of the community. This location is surrounded by beautiful homes that are well taken care of by the residents. They do this because they love their community. They are the welcome to the township, which draws others to live here. Wawa does not offer this, just the money, crime, and destruction of a beautiful community. Please vote no. You hold our future in your hands. Thank you for your time. Next one is from Barb Scanapieco, 75 Hope Road. Dear Board of Supervisors, as you are all well aware by now, there are many residents of Holland, including myself, that vehemently oppose the proposed Super Wawa location in the northern end of the Wright tract. I will reiterate again, it is simply unconscionable that storing 60,000 gallons of gasoline within 70 feet of homes could ever be allowed. So I will ask again, timed out myself. So I will ask again, do you have any plans to affect ordinances that will remedy the outdated zoning and protect our community now and in the future from this type of detrimental development? I don't think there are any others. Lisa, just double checking.
Mr. Bremen, I neglected to mention something in my report concerning the Veterans Advisory Commission, and one of the residents sort of reminded me about that. I would just like to make, you know, raise the issue of what will happen on Veterans Day.
Sure. Just one last second, Frank. Lori Fissinger, I just want to make sure she was not here. Okay, thank you. Please, Frank.
I'm glad somebody did remind me about that. I am the liaison to the Veterans Advisory Commission. I am a veteran and I'm a retired Army Lieutenant Colonel. So, you know, I should have done better in my report, but the Veterans Advisory Commission will be holding an event at 5:00 on Veterans Day, the day after the proposed meeting. I would hope that those of you who have had some concerns about not recognizing veterans, I hope I see you there. It's a great event. It takes no more than maybe about 45 minutes. We've done it for the last 10 years, and I certainly invite everyone here who may be interested to attend it. It's directly, it's right outside here, you know, where you see all those flags. You see the flags of every one of the services with the American flag in the center. The event will occur right in front of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Finally, as a point of interest, the Northampton Township Thanksgiving Food Drive-Through will be at the Northampton Police Station on 111 Township Road, Saturday, November 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They're collecting canned goods and other non-perishable food items to restock local pantries, preferably items related to Thanksgiving, canned corn, yams, cranberries, gravy beans, boxed potatoes, stuffing, et cetera. If you have any questions, you can call the police station at 215-322-6111. A really great event. I think that's what you were referring to.
Thank you very much.
This came in hot off the printer behind me. So I don't believe there is any more public comment, so that will end the meeting. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.